Let's go ahead and let's call this meeting to order. Peggy, roll call please.
Jurnessik.
Here.
Shray.
Here.
Horowitz.
Here.
Brody.
Here.
Malash.
Here.
We all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the republic
which stands
one nation under our
indivisible, justiciable, liberty and justice.
Okay, let's start with item four, discuss and consider an appeal by Brian Grayburn under the township's grading ordinance, requesting an exemption from the requirements of the ordinance to place 800 to 1,000 cubic yards of fill in the rear yard of his property at 4447 Walnut Ridge Circle.
Yeah, Mr. Grayburn, if it's okay with you, I'll just lay out a few things for the board and then allow you to to address them. So we're here this evening. The Township Grading Ordinance does provide a provision for appeal that has appeals being heard by the Board of Commissioners. Just to give you a little bit of background on this particular case, the township first became involved, we issued an occupancy permit to Mr. Grayburn in November of 2017, when he moved into his home. In May of 2018, we were contacted via email just about inquiries about filling a backyard and basically asking if he would need, what kind of permit, would he need a permit to do those kind of activities? We had indicated yes. There was some discussion about that with Mr. Grayburn. Ultimately, in May of 19, one full year later, he did submit an application to the township, was reviewed by the township engineer, and ultimately was issued. The proposal at that time was to place between, I think it was 800 and 1,000 cubic yards of material in the rear of the property. For reasons unbeknownst to the township, the work did not commence. And Mr. Grayburn also pursued a suit. We were against the township and the Court of Commonwealth Court appeared before Board of Arbiters. I believe the premise for that suit was Mr. Grayburn did not believe that he was required to obtain a permit from the township and sought restitution in the form of the permit fee back to him. The Board of Arbiters did not rule that way. They they did not indicate that we needed to return the permit fees. They did share that appeal should be heard by the Board of Commissioners. So fast forward to June of this year, Mr. Grayburn provided us with his written letter of appeal addressed to the to the board, which you all have seen. And we're here tonight to allow him to share his side of the story and for the board to make a determination on the grading of his property.
Mr. Barrett, it's Bob Garvin, the solicitor. We make part of the record Gary Hart's letter of May 8, 2021, directed to Mr. Grayburn, as well as the actual appeal, which is by letter dated May 22, 2021, by Mr. Grayburn. And with that, Mr. Grayburn, please feel free to proceed to with your case.
Brian, if you're out there and you might be muted if you're trying to speak to us. I saw him log on.
Definitely there, his name anyway.
Yeah.
You did.
Okay. Let's see if I can help him get unmuted.
All right, do you hear me now?
There you go. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, John. So yeah, long story short, that was a good synopsis of everything. Basically, my my whole problem here is I had a contract to willing to do this for free a few years ago. And and we both read the code. And as you can see there, I have it quoted. It says a grading permit will not be required for any of the following situations when grading is limited to a single-family dwelling, construction, and development. So reading that, me and the contractor assumed that, you know, I would not need a grading permit. I approached Gary, just, you know, the contractor just wanted, you know, reach out to the township to discuss things and make sure we're okay. And apparently Gary and everyone there felt I did need a grading permit. So as John said, I did obtain one despite my protest, and I couldn't get to fill that year. So anyways, I'm going to try again this year to get fill in my backyard. And John, do you have the picture to pull up so we can show my backyard? So this is this is my backyard. I bought this property assuming I'd be able to do this work. It wasn't a question in my mind. I am a civil engineer by trade. I do this for a living, actually, for work. I get grading permits all throughout the Mid-Atlantic, so I'm pretty familiar with the process. Basically, I was going to fill, if you count six rocks back, I was going to fill back to that and extend my backyard about 50 feet. Because that's all my my property line there. It doesn't affect any stormwater runoff, doesn't affect any environmental issues. As John said, I did satisfy initially all the township's requirements for a permit anyways. Regardless, I got everything professionally designed. And then ran into this roadblock here. So then getting back to, you know, my thoughts on the issue. Basically, everyone in this township does work on their backyard, you know, be it swimming pools or retaining walls or anything, and no grading permits required. And the specific exemption for grading permits on single-family dwellings, to me, is exactly aimed towards people like me. You want to do work in your yard, you don't need to go through a permitting process. And then just to quickly go through my my points in the letter there, it's it's unreasonable, unprecedented, and specifically excluded in the township code that I be required to get this. And, you know, it's I've looked, I haven't found any sort of grading permit issued for anyone. I mean, I see triaxial trucks in my neighborhood all the time, and no one has a grading permit. And then why I'm worried is because there are substantial financial and imprisonment imprisonment penalties if I do not abide by the code. You know, aimed at larger developers who choose not to abide by the code. The fill in my backyard, while, you know, certainly larger than your average swimming pool project, there's a few swimming pools, you know, in size. It's nothing extraordinary. At work, I get grading permits for projects that are 5,000 times larger than this. And where the real problem came in this year is the developer no longer owns Walnut Ridge Circle because it was handed over to the township. So therefore, in the response letter, I got this this spring when I tried to renew, the township wanted both a road bond and a performance bond. A road bond, according to PA State Code, to my knowledge, says that residential deliveries are excluded from needing a bond. And this is, you know, a very small amount of work compared to, you know, a normal project that would require a bond. And then the other thing they required was a performance bond, which I'm not going to be paying for this work. I can't get a bond on something that has no cost. So in essence, I, you know, respectfully respectfully request from the board either a, you know, confirmation, I do not need a grading permit, and I can go about my business, or at a minimum, modify the grading permit so that I do not need performance bonds and roadway bonds. If anyone wants any. And there's the design for what I intend on doing. And I think that everyone's probably at least perused through this and the relevant code that I have highlighted there. And that's all I have, unless anyone needs any clarification.
I do have a question for you. You said that you previously had a grading permit for this project.
Yes.
So why do you think that you don't need to have one now if you if you acquired one previously?
Well, I did that under protest, just essentially to make the township happy. I was able to obtain one because bonding was not required at the time, because the developer gave me permission to drive on the roads. But what's different now is the township owns the roads. So in essence, I can't get permission from the developer to do it. So I was able to satisfy the grading permit process before, but right now with the bonding requirement, I simply can't even jump through those hoops.
John, it's Bob Garvin again. I know Gary Hart's, I think, is on the Zoom as well. Could you have him address how the residential exemption under the grading ordinance is interpreted by the township consistently over the past?
Sure. Before we do that, I have one question. Are we, we're just here whether or not he needs a permit, not necessarily to discuss whether the exemptions in the letter are appropriate at this time.
Joe, could you repeat that, please?
But my understanding again was that we were determining whether or not, under the code at this point, he would get an exemption to the grading permit requirement. And I know there's been a letter that says, once he gets the grading permit, this is what the township would be asking. I mean, we're not here to discuss all those finer points at this point, is it? Or are we, I guess, is my question.
The only point that I think that we need to make part of the record is how that specific exemption provision is interpreted by the township. That that's all.
And just, I know you're going to have historically, and I just wanted to say for for a resident that, you know, I have gone over the the code, and I've been dealing with this code for quite some time now. And it seems to me that that was meant for you don't need additional grading permits, like when you're building a development or a house because you already have a plan in place. I don't think it's meant so that any of our residents can just go into their backyard and make whatever grading improvements that they have just because it's a single-family house. I think the code, pretty much opposite of that. That's just my impression going in.
Gary, can you address how it's being interpreted by your department?
Sure. The way Joe explained it is pretty much the way we have interpreted and enforced it in the past. You come in for a new single-family dwelling, we don't require you to obtain a grading permit prerequisite to getting a building permit. And I think that's the intent of the code.
Mr. Grayburn, do you have anything else you want to add?
I mean, to me, I'm, you know, it's a one-sentence thing. The grading permit is limited to single-family dwelling, construction, and development. And per every definition of development, development is the improvement of someone's of something, of someone's property. Even in the township's own definition, development, and this isn't from the zoning section, I'll give you that, but it says it's for the filling and grading of property is the definition of development. And then on top of that, there's there's standard practice where, and I've asked Gary and John this before, has there ever been a single-family homeowner on a small lot that's gotten a grading permit for anything in this township? Because I I don't know of any.
Yeah, I mean, the answer is yes, not very many. But most often, when when backyards are filled, it's to either install an accessory structure like an addition or a porch or a patio or other items that would require a permit. So generally, when building permits or other permits are required, we don't require to get two, is is how we've applied that. So if you were building a home, for instance, we wouldn't require you to get a grading permit for that home because your building permit for the home construction would would have oversight from the township. And, you know, we would have eyes on anything that might need, you know, geotechnical or or other kind of support.
Well, then to to jump onto that one, though, if if you issue a permit to someone to build a home, do you require roadway bonding and performance guarantees?
That typically already is with the developer and for a plan.
Say I was just developing my own property, though. I don't think this is standard practice to require roadway bonding and performance bonding if I don't finish my home.
I think.
Again, well, Bob, before we get into that, unless that's really an issue tonight, I don't think I have enough information to decide whether the bonding's appropriate or not at this point. Maybe that's something we could discuss in the future after the application's approved or denied.
I mean, the the application's already been denied pending me getting bonding, and I can't get bonding for the for the letter that was sent to me in in May.
So I understand that. But again, it's only before the board tonight on on the interpretation of the statute, is my understanding. I think that if you have some questions on that, you'd come back to the staff, and maybe that's something the board could take up in the future as to whether that bond's appropriate. I mean, to me, this, it's a very simple thing. I mean, clearly, the code is meant to apply to single-family dwellings. Otherwise, everybody could just do whatever they wanted in their own backyard, and we'd have very little influence over it. But I think that the concerns you raise about the the bond may or may not. I mean, at first glance, to me, there's something that seems a tad unfair. But again, I don't know enough about it to say one way or the other. So I think if tonight, we just deal with the fact that you do need this permit, then maybe potentially there's some resolution down the road with with how you could go about it. But we'd need to, you know, figure out, you know, that it worked for the township as well.
Okay, well, what would be the next step to continue that conversation?
I think we need to deal with what's just before us tonight, and that is your request for an appeal from the decision that was made by the township regarding the ordinance or application. So that's that's the only thing that we've been asked to to address and deal with this evening, and that's what we're prepared to do right now.
Okay.
And again, I hope you understand my position that it's not that we're trying to keep you from filling in your backyard. I think it was approved once when the conditions were appropriate. But it seems at this time that now that the township owns those roads, there's other things, and that we're pretty sure that you would need a permit. So hopefully that we can work around some of the conditions if it's possible to do so.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
All right, does anybody have anything else? Not then at this time, does any member of the board have a motion to approve or deny Mr. Grayburn's request?
At this time, I'd make a motion to deny the grading ordinance appeal by Brian Grayburn and direct that the solicitor issue findings that provide that no exemption exists for his proposed grading and that the requirements of the grading ordinance apply to his proposed grading.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appeal is denied. At this time, do we have any public comments?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Ben Hornbeck, Library Director. I just wanted to share a few updates from the library this month. I wanted to let you all know, in case you hadn't seen, the library did just this past Saturday resume our Saturday service hours. So we're now open Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. and Fridays and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That puts us just shy of where we were pre-COVID, and we plan to be fully back by the fall. On Monday, this Monday, June 14, our summer reading and programming begins. We do, we are offering a couple in-person opportunities. There's a weekly nature explorers program at Boys Home Park. There is a Between Two Libraries Book Club, which alternates between our library and Bridgeville Public Library, and that's a monthly for adults. There's also a lot of virtual opportunities still as we transition back to in-person programming. On Monday, we also have a variety of new take-and-make kits available and Teen Unseen bags that are available while supplies last. And then we have Beanstack, which is an online reading and activity tracker as part of our more traditional summer reading. In lieu of our prizes this year, people who read or complete activities earn tickets to then vote for the library to make a modest donation to one of three local charities in our area. And finally, we're partnering with Millie's. There are bookmarks at the library. Anyone of all ages can stop in and get a free bookmark, and then you record five books that you have read. And when you turn it back into the library, you get a coupon to either get a waffle cone with two scoops of ice cream or a free milkshake. We also have another exciting opportunity coming up called One Book, One Community. Andrea was kind enough to work with us to feature that in the upcoming Connect magazine. Essentially, residents will get a chance to vote on one of four books. Whichever book wins, well, they're going to host a community-wide conversation in September. And this is a grant-funded opportunity that we received from the American Library Association. And then finally, just to save the date, we are planning to hold our in-person Beer for Books fundraiser again this year. It'll be in September, on Thursday, September 30. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing as there's no any or no more public comment, let's move on to your correspondence.
Just two pieces of correspondence to bring your attention to. The first is just our monthly report from Oak Ridge Volunteer Power Department. They just outlined the calls they had this month, training they've they've encountered, how many manpower. This sheet really tells it all in terms of their activity for the month. And really, just for informational purposes, we appreciate them getting that to us each month. No real action to be had there. Second, we have a letter from Senator Devlin Robinson. And this is related to a redevelopment assistance capital program or RCAP grant that the township has applied for. So the township has gone through the process of making an application to the Commonwealth for funding for our community center complex slash municipal building project. We've formed them both together in this application. This is a $5 million request. And this is just a letter of support that Senator Robinson issued to Governor Wolf for our application. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware that this was applied for and that we're seeking some assistance from from our legislators for appropriate consideration of the of the application.
All right, let's move to consent calendar items. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to pay the bills? Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bank balances, John?
Yeah, bank balances are here for your review, just in an effort for transparency. Well, it seems like they're having some difficulties, but they're there. We did migrate the accounts over to Washington Financial. So you'll see these statements are from our new new bank. And we'll work out whatever problem was with the the link there, but really just showing them for transparency's sake.
All right, let's move to department reports. Let's start with building permit reports.
Great, so busy month. We've restructured our report to give you a little bit of a look back at the prior years, so you can get an idea of how they compare from year to year. We also broke them down into commercial versus residential and just give you the the previous month and then totals as well. So you could see that in both cases, the residential and the commercial, you know, we're pacing ahead of 2020, largely because of this downturn in March, April, and May of last year with with permits. And we did have some some big-ticket items that came through early in the year on the commercial side for permitting. So that's really the reason for it. But we'll continue to track this. Our goal is to show you the the revenue that comes in and compare it to previous years to give you a sense of what they are. And we still can answer any any question you might have about individual permits for residential or commercial items. But thought it would be good to just illustrate them separately since, you know, they do tell two different stories. So a healthy month for for the township for for both commercial and residential permit fees.
Very nice. I like the new format.
You can thank Abby for that. I'll make sure that we make her aware that you guys noticed.
Okay, all right, let's move on to communications and community development reports. Getting fancy everywhere.
Getting fancy everywhere.
We're getting fancy here in June 2021. Good evening. I want to start by reporting some good news regarding the three awards that the township just won for communications through the National Association of Government Communicators. We earned first place for both the magazine and for our COVID-19 webpage. And the COVID-19 webpage was also chosen from 34 first-place winners as best in show. And the cool thing is, you know, I mean, this is national, state, local, you know, all levels of agency. Other finalists that we were in the same category with included the Department of Homeland Security, the California Teachers Retirement System, a huge county in Virginia with a $17 million budget just for Parks and Rec. So, you know, it really does show what we're able to do with, you know, the support of the Commissioners and valuing and supporting a communications program that, you know, we're able to do this as a small township is really an achievement. So thank you to everybody for your support on that.
Congratulations. Let's begin.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much. And the next issue of our award-winning magazine will be coming out at the end of June. And you can just kind of skim some of the topics that you'll see in that issue on that page. We've been working on the Comprehensive Plan Public Survey. We'll be starting to advertise that later this month. And in the magazine, it's going to be an online-only survey with a limited amount of paper copies that people could request from the township office. And that'll go through July 24, and that'll be used as part of the public engagement process for the Comprehensive Plan update. As we know, our first batch of military banners was installed. I wanted to note that we also GPS mapped them. So the link that's listed at troopbanners.com, you can go there, look up names, click on specific utility pool locations, you know, to find where specific names are hung. So we are still getting orders trickling in. And, you know, as we have smaller batches, Public Works will be able to hang those, and we'll map those as well.
Remind us how many we have out there, Andrea?
There's about 66, and I have about at least four more that are on order right now to add to that. I just want to note from kind of the miscellaneous page that I do have an unpaid college intern who's going to come about one day a week this summer to help with some communications tasks and and some projects. She lives in Upper St. Clair when she's with her parents when she's not attending St. Vincent College, where she's going for communications. We did schedule our next glass recycling event, which is going to be in September, right after, right before and after Labor Day. So we can recycle all of our bottles from our Labor Day picnics. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
No questions. It was really, really good job. Thank you.
Could I just say something real quick?
Sure.
So like 10 years ago, we didn't have a communications department or a magazine, and now we're winning awards, and I think that's very cool.
Congratulations. Good job, Andrea.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. All right, let's move on to engineers report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our engineers report is as dated June 3, 2021. We've got a number of ongoing projects within the township at this time. A lot of involvement with the development staff with the township and the solicitor on developers' agreement items. And we're starting construction inspection on a few new projects. BJ's has been ongoing. The Hastings Development Phase 3 is breaking ground this week with the infrastructure installations. And we have a few new review projects in the Tesla dealership and Newbury AMD treatment for this month's planning commission. And if anyone has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
What's taking place down there at Hastings, Charter Homes?
They're going to start the stormwater installation. They've already done the geotech remediation work for the pre-existing foundations for those removals. So they're looking to start their stormwater.
All right. Thank you, Jason.
Certainly.
All right, let's move on to park and recreations report.
Paula, you out there? Do you want one of us to give you a report? See if we see her.
She's on. She's muted.
Oh, okay. Let's.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Okay, perfect. I have to dial in, so sorry about that. Yeah, so my monthly report, John, if you want to scroll down, I kind of added some pictures too. I think pictures speak a thousand words, so I just wanted to include some pictures of the programming and activities going on. So for our programs, we had another round of Drive Up Bingo, which was a big success. We had girls on the run. They ran their 5K in Fairview Park. About 15 girls have been training for eight weeks to run a 5K. And they had a little event in the park and they all finished. So that was the goal for them, just to get across the finish line. We just today had training with summer staff for summer camp. So summer camp will be starting next Monday. Ian has started about three weeks ago, and he's kind of taken over all the programming and camp, and everything is going really well. He's excited to finally see camp in full swing next week. John, if you want to scroll down. Sell for parks. We went out to bid for an advertised bid for Phase 1. Hopefully, that'll be coming to you guys next month to approve the bids. We can start Phase 1. We received the contract from Vortex, and I'm in communications with the search fixing rep for the splash pad project. So that kind of will go hand in hand with Phase 1, once we get some earth moving up there on the Mayview site. Majority of the month I spent applying for the DCD Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant for additional funding for the ball fields, new ball fields up at Fairview. We're put in for the full amount of 250,000. So we should hear from them by the end of the year. So hopefully, we can get the DCNR grants and DCD for a nice chunk of money to complete Phase 3 of the Fairview project, which would be the ball field. I am applying for a dog park grant for 25,000 through Petsafe. So I've been working on kind of gathering some dog pictures from residents and videos. And I'm putting them together in a YouTube video that's going to go along with my application. We've got some great responses on that, and people are so excited for a dog park. I have too many pictures to even be able to use all of them to put in a YouTube video. So it's really great to see the the community's support for this. We had a local scout reach out to us. We had to quickly put a project together for him. So him and other scouts pulled some weeds and some flowers as you enter Morgan Park. I don't think the Morgan Park sign has ever looked this good. So definitely thanks to that scout, and he'll be receiving his, I think it's called Eagle Scout rank in the next couple months. So hopefully, we can bring him to one of the meetings. If you want to scroll down, John. You see some dog pictures. I just wanted to include kind of the preliminary rendering of the splash pad that we're working with Vortex on to get that up and going. We have some more pictures of the scout project. We scrolled down, John. And then these pictures in the little corner, they have started construction at Boys Home Park for the new playground. They are finishing up the earthwork this week. And I just talked to the playground rep today, and we should have the equipment installed and surface laid by the end of June. So we're shooting from like a July, mid-July to have a ribbon cutting and have that playground open for the rest of the summer. So that's very exciting. Going to scroll down just some other things. We have our first movies in the park tomorrow, if the rain holds off, I mean, Friday, if the rain holds off. And we scheduled additional ones for September and October. And we're going to have a concert in the park August 20th. Bands and details to determine, but we put that date on the calendar. So if you guys have any additional questions, I'll be happy to answer this.
No, it all looks really good. Thank you, Paula. Love the splash pad. Did everybody see the splash pad?
I saw the splash pad.
Super excited.
There it is again.
Any questions for Paula?
Good job, Paula.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, keep it going. All right, let's move on to police report.
Hi, everybody. The only thing I have tonight is tomorrow and Friday, we will be conducting our oral interviews for the level entry officer. That'll be all day tomorrow and half the day Friday. We have 21 candidates to interview. So then we'll get the list certified by the middle of the month and start our background checks. That's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you. All right, Public Works report.
Right. Butch had some, oh, you've got to be kidding me. I was going to say Butch has had technical troubles with his report. So we told him to come into to the office to make sure it goes smoothly. But that doesn't want to seem to work. I got, I have it somewhere. Bear with me for one moment. I'll find it. Andrea, did you email that to me, any chance?
Yes, I did.
Oh, yeah, there we go. All right, sorry about the delay, guys, but when you see the report, you're going to appreciate it. Hopefully. All right, let's get that down to size. Okay.
Wow, very impressed.
So we tried to put some statistics and some photos in this. I'll let I'll let Butch kind of give the report, but I apologize for the technical problem. It's not just him. It's it's the rain. It must be the rain outside.
You handled it pretty well, dude. I think we're back. No problem.
Yeah, May's really been a busy month for us, Public Works. You can see we do everything. We had to locate 217 PA1 calls. We installed 16 different signs, delivered 13 recycling bins, and we mowed 100 miles of grass along the roads. Thought we'd kind of let everybody know, when you drive down a road, you don't look and see, okay, they're like driving 10 miles here in their mowing and they're mowing eight miles over here. We actually get paid from PennDOT, we're reimbursed for mowing 68 miles of their roads. And we have 32 of our own, which makes it 100. Pretty much doing everything all over the township. We're also repairing and restoring the roads. You can see in the photos, they're under the caption of roads. We did get a hot box with the boys are shoveling out of on the left bottom. That lets us keep the blacktop that we get at the plant. Keeps it hot. It'll keep it hot all night long. You have to do set the timer. Before, we would get it in the dump truck and go as fast as you can and try to get it all out of the truck. And sometimes it freezes up in the truck. So we've come a long way with the hot box. Stormwater issues. We've always had issues down on Burner Street. We were going to pave this year, and we decided to do put in 300 foot of 12-inch pipe. We put in, replaced and repaired the inlets. And happy to say that we're now ready for the pavers to come in on Burner Street. We've been working with the people that are installing the new playgrounds. We had to take our hoaryum up. There was some concrete that wasn't, well, it was there, but we didn't know it. The contractor didn't bid on that part. It was going to be an issue. So we took our hoaryum up and worked with them in conjunction so that there's no overcharges for us. Put in new electrical service at Fairview in anticipation of running streetlights and a whole new circuit out along the road for the anything that I guess Paula's planning to do in the near future. And of course, we keep painting the cross lines and everything. We did get a new brush mower for doing the retention ponds that we have all over the township. It's actually a track machine that has a brush mower on the front. Up or left there, you can see, you know, how that works. We just got into it. We haven't really done a whole lot with it yet because we just got the machine a couple of weeks ago. But I'm sure that's going to be put to good use. And we're still mowing 94 acres a week. And the military banners. We're still doing the regular maintenance that we have to do. And I have to thank Andrea for putting this together for me. I'd be lying if I thought God did it.
You know, one thing on here that I wanted to to point out particularly, this this Boys Home Playground was really was a lifesaver, what Public Works was able to jump in and do. I shared with you guys last month that we were having, you know, some contractor issues, getting them to mobilize. They finally did mobilize, and then right away, they uncover, you know, conquer some concrete foundations that were buried. And, you know, we're just ready to throw their arms up and and leave, quite honestly. And, you know, we were able to bring a piece of equipment up there that same day, you know, not only break up the concrete, but, you know, get rid of it for them as well, really allowed that project to stay on track. So a huge amount of gratitude to those guys for keeping that on track. Any questions for for Butch about Public Works?
Not at all, just very, 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 very impressed with this new format layout. And it really just goes to show how much work the Public Works Department really does for the township. So thank you to Butch and everybody for all of your hard work. It's really evident by this presentation that we just had seen. Thank you. Very nice job.
Yeah.
Thanks, Butch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Butch.
Thank Adrian, too.
Yeah.
Butch did all the work.
Okay. Good job, guys.
All right, let's move to request tracker.
Good amount of activity in the request tracker. Typically, these are dominated by trash and recycling needs, but we're starting to see them used more for things like property maintenance complaints, complaints about, you know, some drainage issues and some road situations. So it's just really a testament that, you know, the system's working. It might be because of the the app that we have now, where people can report these items from their phone and their tablets as well. But the the usage is is starting to increase. And I think, you know, when we, as we close these out, we're also working on, you know, just improved communication with with residents, making sure that they're, you know, they're satisfied with how things were resolved and that they were all timely.
Okay. All right, let's move to assistant manager report.
Obviously, I have I have to get with Andrea to make my report a little bit better. So I didn't get the memo. We were we were working with Andrea this month, so mine's still the same format, unfortunately. So I continue, obviously, to manage the escrow process. That's a daily occurrence for me. We received additional wires and checks worth past due on our current accounts. Basically, brought in an additional $20,000, and I'm waiting an additional $28,000 on the new developments that are coming in for escrow. The RFP for the Pension Fund Investment Managers was completed and advertised. Worked with John on that. The deadline for submission, obviously, on that is June 30 at 10 a.m. The American Rescue Plan application was completed and uploaded to the state of PA site. One half of our distribution, which is $750,000, is expected within the next 30 to 60 days. And obviously, the the additional distribution of the other $750,000 will be made sometime next year. I imagine that will be determined. John and I conducted the finance committee interviews. We finalized finalized the list of candidates. And obviously, Commissioner Maloche and I had an email exchange. And that's where, obviously, my report was submitted before our Commissioner Maloche's email exchange. John, I don't know if you want to say anything about the finance committee and where we're at with it or.
Yes, we, you know, we got a, we got a pretty good level of interest in the community. Pat and I spoke to everyone that submitted an application. We have a recommendation to appoint seven members to this board. Our plan is to, you know, reach out to those those seven, make sure they're in a position to accept. We would bring this to you next month, and we thought they'd be, you know, agenda items. We'll have you formally appoint them by by name and by term. We still have to carve, work out all those details. And then, you know, we have a pretty good group there. So I think we're going to get a lot of a lot of traction on some things that we're trying to to account for, largely thinking we'll work with them on, you know, the our capital needs and to, you know, review some alternatives for financing some of those, whether they be going to market for some type of bond issuance, or maybe there's some other alternative ways to fund these things. But that might be an initial discussion for the group to to weigh in on. So we hope that next month, you'll have a list of names to appoint, and that will call a meeting soon thereafter.
Thank you. Last but not least, I sent a report, I created a report, basically looking at our existing debt structure and seeing how we could possibly, what our borrowing scenarios could possibly be for the upcoming capital projects. Looking at 250% of our basically general budget versus 350%. It's it's a lot of technical stuff from a finance perspective. But it's basically a one-stop shop for for our borrowing needs and what we potentially I could look at and what the rates, what the rates are doing, where they're going, and trying to figure out the best way to approach it. So John has that, and I imagine he'll be reviewing it in the near future. So that's it for me. Any questions?
Thank you, Pat.
Looks good. Thank you. On all of that, those of you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move.
Finance committee and a splash pad. It's like everybody's dream is coming true.
Okay, let's move on to managers' report.
Yeah, and, you know, sadly, just text on my report also. But I'll go through this quickly. I wanted to spend some time tonight touching on, you know, Pat indicated that he was able to get our paperwork filed for the American Recovery Plan Act, or what we're calling ARPA funds. I included some some guidance from the Department of Treasury with my report. And I thought that, you know, it's probably a good time just to have some general discussions with the board about how we might seek to use some of these fundings. Based upon the guidance now, and that is kind of evolved, it continued to evolve. But it does feel like there's some flexibility for how the the township could use these funds. So I think, you know, it'd be good to get maybe a little bit of direction of what what areas the board would like to focus on. And, you know, then staff can, you know, work on, you know, drilling down and putting some some either some projects together or some, you know, areas potentially where these funds could be could be directed. You know, there's some broad-based things there. I enumerate them here with these bullet points. But it does allow us to be creative. I mean, when you look at the guidance, we are able to provide some assistance to small businesses that may have been impacted by the pandemic. We are able to do that either through grants or loans or technical assistance, however we we see fit. We're able to put money into infrastructure, into water projects. So, you know, we have a, you know, stormwater pollution reduction plan that requires funding. We're able to put some there. Potentially, we could put some into some of the capital projects we talked about related, maybe related to public safety with our new building. And, and, you know, we also have the ability to potentially reimburse first responders. This would probably be through Southbridge and the ambulance workers that may have transported COVID victims or in some way. or in some way engaged in training or however their time was spent. We may have the ability to to help them offset some of those costs with this funding. So I don't know if anyone has any any thoughts on what areas we might want to focus on more than others, or if you'd like us to, you know, make some recommendations. But it looks like we're going to get, you know, the first chunk of this, first half of it soon, and then the next half in the coming year. And we're going to have to obviously account for this and go through some type of of system. But with the the right amount of oversight, I think we can, we can make some pretty creative things happen with the money.
I have a few ideas I'd like to maybe pursue. One would be, I'd definitely like to talk to Southbridge to see how they were impacted and maybe make some sort of compensation to them. Because they really did, they they worked out for COVID. And I know that, you know, that's one of the ways we're able to use this money. I think infrastructure would be great, you know, maybe we would check a bunch of road projects and things like that. And then I think the other thing I've been thinking a lot about is some of the economic impacts, some of the small businesses. And how do we help our businesses rebound and come back and thrive? And so maybe there's some way where we can work with small businesses. Maybe we work with some of the developers and some of the empty storefronts to see if there isn't a way where we can get creative to work with them to start filling those to bring back our economy here in the township.
Yeah, I think those are great ideas. I mean, all those would be, at least according to this, the guidance we've seen so far, would be eligible. So I think it's just a matter of, you know, framing those up the right way, you know, identifying, you know, some kind of program or procedure to best put these in use. So, you know, we can continue that discussion maybe offline with with you, Commissioner Rhodey, and anyone else on the board that wants to jump in on that. And then look to lay something out for everyone to review in the coming months.
Okay.
I really liked that small business idea and the Southbridge idea. I think, you know, those people really helped get us through, so maybe we could do something back for them. That would be great.
They did. And at a time when ambulance services are going out of business left and right, you know, we're very fortunate that we have one here that services our community. So I'd like to keep them here.
Yeah, very good. Next thing I wanted to touch upon, we did get our first work product out of the comprehensive planning effort that we're going through, and this came in the form of what the consultants call Trends Report. And I included a copy of this for you guys to take a look at. And it's, I think it's just really good information about our community. You know, they really took some very deep dives on some demographic information and then compared us to some South Hills communities as well as some other growth communities like Cranberry and Pine Township in the north. Both looking at not just our our growth, but looking at benchmarks for, you know, things like our education levels among residents, what type of sectors they're working in, their consumer habits. It looks at transportation in terms of commutes to work. And there's some traffic counts that that they put in here of our local roadways. And it's, you know, it's forty-six pages. So obviously, there's, you know, a lot of lots to take in. But I think when you start looking through it, there there are maybe some sections we can, you know, really dive into and see how we might use it, maybe in marketing the township. Or maybe there's some some points that are brought out in here that we want to, you know, work into program offerings or other things. But I wanted to share this with the board because if you if you go through all these details, it really gives you a nice snapshot of the township and good to see how it how it kind of compares or overlays with other suburban municipalities. So that link's on there. We'll also get this out to you, you know, in digital form, so you have it in your inbox. This this report is going to be a standalone report that is going to, you know, feed the comprehensive plan. You know, it's based on data and statistics, so there's not too much changing that should occur. But, you know, as more information becomes available, this report can be updated. And it's a nice tool for us to have. Again, I think it has crossover into, you know, all kinds of different areas that will just help, you know, you as board members set the vision for the township and and for staff just to understand more about how our collective residents come together. So I encourage everyone to take a peek at that when they can. Later on tonight, we're going to have a discussion about our existing sign ordinance. We've had some discussions as a as a group about changing some of our regulations specifically related to LED signs. We've asked H R G to put some some things together there. So they've given us a document. We do have some decisions to make or some input to give them so we can, you know, draft or amend an ordinance and get it advertised. Our our kind of timeline, just so you guys know, is if we can have a, you know, kind of a good discussion this evening and maybe get some direction on just two or three things that we that we need to iron out. And we we could all, if you're comfortable, we could ask you to to advertise that while we work those bits into the ordinance. We got to share that with with the state or the county, I'm sorry. Yeah, the county planning has to see that. Usually takes about forty-five days that they come back to us. We have to advertise it. So probably in in two months from now, we're thinking about an August timeline. At the earliest, we'd be able to have a hearing and look to adopt these changes. So that there is a document, we'll get to it later tonight, but just wanted to let you know kind of how we got there through this this little narrative. We talked about the the playground replacement update. Paul gave a good update. Butch shared how the Public Works jumped in, so I won't belabor that any. I did want to want to touch on something related to roadways. I know that earlier this month, and as I hear the rain coming down, I'm thinking about it. We had some traffic incidents, two separate accidents on Old Oakdale Road. And, you know, we took a good look at that and, you know, we we do see how, you know, more in like light rain and in rain situations, there's a slickness on the roads, maybe from some oils coming back up it from previous, you know, tar and chip applications that that could could be the culprit for this. We we asked, we asked our, we asked Lennon Smith, who's coordinating our annual road program, to take a look at the cost to to mill out from, you know, the, there's a paving joint right at School Street towards the bottom up to Pinnacle Point where we think is the area that would need to be milled. And they gave us a quote to, you know, to to mill and to pave that, which would be about ten thousand dollars. And, you know, given what we experienced there, it seems like that is a change order we would like to make. I just wanted to get the board's concurrence on that. It's a relatively, we're talking about a one-point-five project that's relatively small amount. I mean, it's not the whole road, but I think it would take care of the 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 safety issues that we encountered, you know, more recently here.
That's a good idea.
I agree.
I agree. You definitely need to do something.
And just an update on that, are they're scheduled to be in the township right after the Fourth of July. This is Young Blood paving. They were the the contract award winners. So all things considered, they'll be here first week of July and their contract has them till, I think, the end of October to complete the the work. Any questions for me before we get into agenda items?
For that milling, John, could it be done separate from Young Blood? Or does that have to go through Young Blood? Is that where the ten thousand bid came from?
That's the quote we got from them. I mean, we could we could shop that, you know, I think it's probably small enough. It's below bidding thresholds where, you know, we could get some some different quotes. You know, that quote really doesn't have a mobilization charge because they'll already be here. So it probably is going to be difficult to beat, but it might not be a bad idea to 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 check with, you know, one or two other outfits that would be below the threshold. So if that's something you like to do, we can.
We'll just use who we have.
Yeah, I mean, the only, I, we, but we might be hard pressed to have anyone be able to come out sooner. Maybe we can. I mean, you know, that that July timeline, that's that's about thirty days away. Most papers are pretty scheduled out this time of the year. But if if you have some ideas, Keith, that would, you know, I'd be more than happy to make some calls.
Whatever everybody thinks. I mean, if we get hot weather and then light rain, it could turn into the ice rink again going up that hill.
I think the sooner we get it done, the better. It's bad.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll make some calls, see if we can have anyone that can get out there sooner. And if not, we'll stick with with what we have and we'll just, you know, have Public Works just be, you know, kind of conscious of it and be ready to put some antiscid down if it looks like it's getting slick.
Is there, is there any signage or anything that would do to help slow people down in interim? Or does that matter or not matter?
Yeah, we put signs up. I think we did. Yeah, we can put up, you know, maybe slippery one wet or caution with.
I mean, I think it's something pretty like alerting, right? Is that that's where the two accidents, right?
Yeah, you're right.
Something more than just a typical slippery one wet. I don't know how much people pay attention. I don't know. You guys figured out, but if.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we might try the like the speed signs just to get people to to stop to like slow their speed down before they hit that that curve as well. That might be a strategy we try.
Especially if graduation is tomorrow.
That's a pretty good strategy for that area in general to keep the traffic going slow. I mean, even when it's not slippery, people drive too fast through there. So.
I got, I got some speed bumps we can put down.
Maybe some police presence would slow people down.
Okay, yeah, we'll look at a combination of things there to try to avoid any any kind of future incident out there.
Yes.
Okay. That's all for my report.
All right.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, guys.
All right, since there's no old unfinished business, let's move on to new business. Item A, discuss and consider the second partial payment to Alex C. Paris Construction Company Incorporated for the Southfield Municipal Building Phase One in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, one hundred, one dollars and twenty-four cents. Is there a motion to make the second payment, partial payment to Alex Paris in the amount of one hundred thousand, one hundred, one dollars and twenty-four cents?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, discuss and consider a motion to advertise an ordinance amending chapter two-eleven traffic impact fee, Article Two, definition, section two-eleven through two-fourteen, calculation of per peak hour trip fee to provide a per peak hour trip fee of one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars for the South Transportation Service Area and one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the North Transportation Service Area.
Yeah, I think just by way of introduction, this is a little bit of housekeeping. We asked the board to approve a revised transportation impact capital improvement plan a few years back, which included new projects that could be funded by impact fees. And we also established a slightly different fee structure. I think what we discovered is the the recording ordinance that's to go with that didn't get done. So this is a little bit of housekeeping there.
Okay. Is there a motion to advertise ordinance amending chapter two-eleven traffic impact fee, Article Two, definition, section two-eleven through two-fourteen, calculation of per peak hour trip fee to provide for a per peak hour trip fee of one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars for the South Transportation Service Area and one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the North Transportation Service Area.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, discuss and consider a motion to grant to JED Three LLC Montessori School a waiver from the township's land development requirement for a sidewalk along Bayview Road. The board previously approved the land development plan at its October fourteen, twenty-twenty meeting and omitted action on a sidewalk waiver request.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, discuss and consider a motion to authorize the entry into an agreement of purchase and sale with Inner Care Properties for the township's purchase of Lot One in the Inner Care Properties subdivision in a form and content, content acceptable to the township solicitor. The consideration being paid by the township for the purchase is eight hundred thousand dollars and the intended use of the property is for the Southfield Township Community Center. Is there a motion to authorize entry into an agreement for purchase and sale with Inner Care Properties?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item E, discussion of LED signage analysis.
Okay, I'll I'll pull up on the screen here the feedback we got from H R G. And again, they were tasked with helping us amend our existing ordinance to permit LED signs. Right now, LED signs, like being described as signs that have electric message center type signs are not prohibited. They're strictly, are not allowed. They're strictly prohibited in the township. So I think the intent would be to permit them, but to have have control over some certain aspects of the LED signage. So some of the things that we want the board's input on, you can read through this memo. They also pull some some language from some other zoning ordinances that seem to be, have good controls. But the the bottom of of this report show the things that we need some input on. And one of them are, like, what are the zoning districts that we want these to to be applied in? Should these be in the commercial districts? Do we want them to extend to industrial districts? Are there other districts that you had in mind? You know, we we could either think about this in terms of zoning districts or if we wanted to think about just specific corridors or areas, then we could consider things like an like an overlay district for these signs where where they would be permitted. So that's our first, that's our first kind of thing that we have to work through. They also are asking if if it's only the 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 size of or the the LED copy that we want to address here. Do we do want to do anything with limitations of size limitations or or anything related to the actual size of the signs? And you can see where they say sizes allowed for digital signs typically coincide with existing sizes allowed for ground monument signs and wall signs. Is that what we would like to accomplish? I'm thinking the answer is probably yes. We can vary that by district type, or we could allow larger signs in in different districts. We now have, we now vary the size of a sign from about one hundred to two hundred square feet, depending on the district. They tend to be within that that range of each other. So I guess the questions are, where do we want these to occur? And are we okay with the sizes varying by district kind of the way we have now? Or was there other considerations that we wanted to give for for LED signs? I mean, I would recommend that we probably keep the sizing limitations the same unless we thought that was also some type of an issue. But I wouldn't want to see a larger sign only because it was LED. I I would think that our our size requirements are probably appropriate. We just want to permit the 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 message boards or the LED signs in in certain districts.
This is specific to LED signs, not all signage on businesses.
Correct.
Okay. Now I'm good with keeping the size, though. I think that I think the big so I guess as far as areas and districts, I I would see, I guess, B District, C Districts, and Industrial, P E D.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we could do things like, and we could ask H R G to to draw up some samples for us. But we could also put restrictions or regulations to, like, in proximity to residential districts. So if it's within so many feet, then, you know, maybe they can't be as bright or they can't change as rapidly. But we have those kind of abilities as well. So this is really the first step. I mean, I know we talked about kind of a quick timeline on it, but we should, we should make sure we get this right. I think what we want to just hear is, you know, kind of what we want to accomplish, we'll get this back to them. And then we can, we can have them put the the technical details on the on the the ordinance language. So in terms of, do you guys want to see restrictions on brightness and like changeable copy and things like like that as well?
Yes.
I think when I'm looking, I I agree, yes. I think when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at how do we allow businesses to modernize? Like I look at some of these businesses up and down, like Washington Pike, Miller's Run. And they also have to use that old standard like tile letters on the billboards that they plug in. So I'm thinking something that allows them to digital to advertise. But I don't want to see anything with motion or moving and things like that, like we're on the Vegas Strip.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking for.
Keep it classy and away from houses, I think, is kind of the thing. When you said from residential districts, I think more importantly from residences. So that 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 should be, you know, it can't be within a certain distance from someone's house. And it can't be so bright within someone's house or something like that. But I think we're all kind of on the same page with.
Yeah, I think as a starting point, and we can look at some of the regulations. North yet recently introduced a change to their their ordinance that permits these types of signs. And, you know, they have restrictions about blinking, flashing or moving, not being permitted. They have limitations to the size of characters on the, as far as, you know, the lettering goes. They have a limitation on the the number of words or text that can be on a sign. I guess so as to, you know, not to like minimize distraction to motorists. They have brightness requirements in place. So I think, you know, those are.
That sounds good.
Yeah, pretty well thought out restrictions or regulations, I should say. So I think here you guys say we want to see restrictions, we want to see protection in our our neighborhood districts. We can take a look at, it sounds like all of the non-residential zoning districts were okay with them being in so long as they have, you know, these these regulations in place and some protections for homes that might be close by.
Sounds right to me.
Okay.
Can you go back? I know there's been a few cases that have been in front of the zoning hearing board where this has been an issue. And just see, you know, what's been proposed there as well. And check with the zoning hearing board and see if, you know, there are any. I know they don't like light up signs to be enough, any challenges they're facing or anything like that.
Yeah, I did. We looked at this as a staff a little bit, and I can I can tell you that, you know, the zoning board's been pretty consistent in terms of rejecting any appeals that that come to them for LED signage. So they haven't really granted any variance for them. I think the only exceptions are for things like, I think, the volunteer fire department might have a sign with LED that was granted some kind of variance. And they also, what was I going to say about the zoning board? Oh, terms of the cases that they've heard, most of them, see, are the the most recent ones seem to have been on Washington Pike. We had one most recently by the the Protec that had made an application. I think there were one or two others in the last couple of years along that same corridor. So that does strike me as a corridor that where these kind of signs make sense. And I think if we gave some thought to where those other locations would be, you know, that that would be pretty easy to do.
Good.
I thought the one that Protec had brought to the township to the zoning hearing board, I'd seen what they were proposing. It was actually a really nice sign. It updated what they currently have. And it it was just a simple messaging board that was electronic that they could program from inside and so having to go out and use the stick to replace the letters and such. And so I think it would actually, I think it will clean it up a little bit.
I think you're right. I think when you look at the businesses that are using, you know, letters that they're manually changing and what those signs look like, you know, those letters fall off. I think that's, you know, that's really what what's driving us to want to do this is just to, you know, help them be more attractive, help the the character of the community look a little better while still still protecting, you know, any any residents that might be close by. Okay, so let let me just take a little bit of what you guys said, push it back onto HRG, have them quickly turn around, you know, a draft of this that we can review in a little more detail. You know, tonight, really, it's just a memo that that's getting us started. And they're, they were just looking for some basic direction from us. I think we have enough to to respond back to them. You know, we we may also want to, you know, get some input from from the business community, if you guys wanted to to think about some some business owners that may have been affected by this or whose viewpoint you respect, and and we can, you know, see if if they have any thoughts on on restrictions or regulations that they could live with. If you're okay with that time wise, maybe we can commit to getting back to you by our next meeting. An ordinance that that actually looks like an ordinance that that can be, that can be advertised as opposed to trying to to do it now without having that in front of us. Because I think we need a little more time just to see what those regulations are, kick them out to you guys. We can do that in between meetings through email. Make sure that we're we're covering all the things we want to cover and that we don't have to, you know, come back shortly after adopting it and amended for another reason. So if you're okay with that, we can make this be a priority for next month.
Yeah, that sounds good. That sounds good. This way it's cleaned up too. So when you're submitting to the county, it doesn't have a lot of comment. It's cleaner for them and we get it back faster.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Okay, well, if you guys have any other feedback on that, feel free to reach reach out to me. We'll take a shot at drafting something and sharing it with you guys.
Sounds good.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Um, at this time, do we have any additional other comments? I'm seeing no additional public comment. Let's move to board discussion. I I just have a couple of items. Last week, John and I sat on a public, on a meeting with the Port Authority to talk about possibly bringing back public transportation to South Fayette, whether that be some sort of route that's going to bring the buses in through Newbury or something like that. So discussions are going to be ongoing, but just to make everybody aware that we are trying to bring some sort of public transportation back to help bring staff to businesses and make it more attractive to bring business to the community because we have public transportation here. We also met with the members of the Newbury Declaration. Since this was taken over from Brett Malky, there's been a lot of movement within that group. And so we we just talked about how the township can be a resource and an asset for them to work with that, you know, to work with them, to help them bring businesses here, you know, what what are some things we can do to help them? They seem really positive. They seem to want to really get this project up and moving. They have some really good ideas, some good leads. And so they're looking to maybe do some sort of reset and really kick off moving and get things moving. And then the third thing I want to talk about is House of Representative, PA House of Representatives passed a resolution to end the emergency declaration, but now goes over to the Senate. If the Senate passes that, we will be required to go back to in-person meetings in July. So just to put that on everybody's radar, there's potential for that in July. But I'll keep everybody posted as to, you know, if that happens, when that happens.
Hey, just a question on that. If that if that were to occur, you know, we typically, you know, do a an advertisement for all our meetings that in advance. And I think we we maybe did a some type of advertisement indicating they would be virtual. Do we have to? Should we advertise that the meeting will be in person? If if we have to go that route?
That's a bomb question.
And should we also try, do you guys want to, if we're obligated to be in person, should we also try to have a remote option for folks if we can? I mean, that might be a little challenging, but I I don't know. I just throw it out there.
Do you think we would be able to do the remote option for residents that may want to participate?
I mean, I think we should keep it that, I mean, I don't know. That's something I think we might talk about in executive session, how to do it going forward with the public meetings and keeping it virtual if we want to.
Do you want to do that tonight in executive session?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Is there any other board discussion? All right. Solicitors record.
Just a few items. Jason touched on it. It was really a very busy month with the developers agreements. Mod wash, Montessori Academy and Charter Phase Three were all completed. And I worked with township staff to make sure that the appropriate fees and expense reimbursements were made as well. And finally, as the board approved tonight, it was somewhat of a busy month with Intercare Lot Number One. Happy to report that we have finalized the agreement with Intercare Properties and it should be available for signature by by chairman person tomorrow morning.
I will make myself available. Wonderful. That's exciting.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. All right, well, then I guess we will have an executive session this evening. We also had an executive session prior to our meeting tonight to talk over one legal matter and one personnel issue. So with that said, is there a motion to adjourn the executive session not to return?
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Can we use that same link, John, or do we need a new one? I think it'll still work.
Okay, let's, if it doesn't work, I'll I'll send out a new a new one right away, but let's try the old one.
All right. Appreciate it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.